All right. Uh, so thanks for joining us, everyone. Today it is July fifth. Uh, twenty twenty-two. Happy birthday to my brother. Um, and uh, this is a special meeting of the Lake County, or not a special meeting, a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we've changed our meeting times now going forward to eleven AM. So um, on Tuesdays. Just so much better except for on this holiday. Yeah. All right. So um, if everyone will make sure that their phones are on silence and we will start by uh, saying the pledge in a moment of silence. Thank you all very much. Um, so with that, I'll move into an approval of the agenda. If anyone has anything that they would like to change or remove or modify.
The. I don't have anything other than if we need to rearrange agenda items for new reason, but.
I don't have anything to change either.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll move to approve our agenda for today.
A second.
Right. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
That's for me.
All right. Seeing then all those in favor?
I.
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 All right. Thank you so much. Okay, um, community informational items. We'll start with Commissioner Mudge today.
Sure. Um, I, the demonstration wildfire demonstration project down on County Road Four is nearing completion. Uh, didn't quite get it finished on that six acre parcel that the county owns. Along the right away there into turquoise lake estates, but uh, lots of great work. It looks really good and lots of positive feedback from the neighbors. So that's very exciting. Um, we are going to wrap and finalize, finish that project with some of those co-swap dollars and perhaps the crew that's coming in. To start at Community Field and on CMC Campus. Um, and so that will be done. Um, and we'll just continue to work with partners in Excel. Um, especially as you know, they have their power lines down the other side and and probably have an interest in partnering. As we, as we might tackle um, some of that work on the ground in the future. Um, and we also were awarded the second landscape um, co-swap uh, Colorado. Strategic Wildfire Action Program. Uh. Funding. To the value of five hundred thousand dollars. So thank you to Colorado State Forest Service and Arwick for continuing to. Help us um, navigate and apply and manage all those opportunities.
Cool. All right, Commissioner Fiedler. Oh, sorry, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Fiedler.
Um, just a note on the city council agenda. These participation in and contribution to the Justice Center is on the agenda tonight.
Cool. Wonderful. Um, I think just for myself, um, just to follow up that we did apply for MMOS funding for. Um, our transit project and implementation. Um, so that application was submitted. Um, to our local TPR um, transportation regional um, planning. And so um, we'll hear back from that. We're getting ready to today. Um, begin the pre-application for the fifty-three eleven Federal Transit Authority. Operating dollars to supplement um, any MMOF funding that we may be awarded for transit. Um, so that's been um, submitted and we will hear about that shortly. Um, I think just wanna want to also um. Say good luck to get outdoors level. Today's their first day of Rocky's Rock. So um, camp looks like it was busy this morning. So. Um, good luck to them on their, on their season this summer and thank you for providing that care in our community. Um, so with that, um, we'll move into any commissioner clarifications that we may have. Commissioner Fiedler or Commissioner Mudge?
Nothing for me.
All right, none for me either. Thank you. Um, public comments on items not on the agenda. Um, in the room with us, we have County Manager Tim Bergman. Um, Human Resources Specialist Ally Garvey, Claire Skeen, um, Assistant to the County Manager Attorney Chris Floyd and Cindy from the Clerk's Office. Um. There isn't any public with us in the room, but if anybody in the room wishes to make a public comment, you have an opportunity now. No. All right, um, we have one participant on the Zoom and I'm sorry, I cannot see the remainder of your. Phone number, but if you would like to make a public comment, um, this is an opportunity for you to do so. You are welcome to unmute yourself um, and make a public comment if you'd like for three minutes. Okay. All right, so we move on into new business. Um, all right, first on our agenda. Lake County Public Library Board of Trustees appointment of Matt O'Brien. Um, submitted by the Lake County Library Board of Trustees. Um. Tim, do you want to present any information on this to us or? Um, give us any background or any other additional information?
Sure. I can give you a quick um, update.
Sure.
Uh, so Lake County Public Library does have a Board of Trustees, um, and it is under their charge to find new board members when a board member. Rolls off or resigns. So long-term uh, board member Kathy O'Leary um, resigned to finally enjoy her retirement officially. Um, so we thanked her um. Profusely for her service to the library, um, the library. And the Board of Trustees did a public search, um, and Matt O'Brien sent in a letter of interest and was interviewed by the Board of Trustees and um. The board really liked him and uh, took a vote on June fourteenth at their regular meeting um, to recommend his appointment to the board. Now it's up to the. Board of County Commissioners to approve that. Um, and Matt's uh, term will end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Their five-year terms on that board.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Um, on this or the letter of recommendation. So Commissioner Mudge or Fiedler, do either of you have questions for Tim?
Nope.
Is Matt a local? Do we have that? I don't know if we have that. Like, the airport doesn't require a. You know, a resident and I'm just curious if they're.
Uh, he does live here. I cannot remember what he does here, but he is.
That's okay. Yeah. Yeah, just curious. Great. Great. No, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Actually, one thing just I, my recollection is, I mean, the library board, that's statutorily required, right? That's not something we created. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. I will accept a motion.
Sure. Uh, I'll move to approve the appointment of Matt O'Brien to the Lake County Public Library Board of Trustees.
A second.
Right. Any further discussion?
None for me.
No, thank you.
All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
I.
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 All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing that to us as well. Um, next item on our new business agenda is adopting mid-year cost of living adjustment for Lake County Government employees presented by Tim Bergman, the County Manager. So, Tim. You wanna come back up to the table um, to give us a presentation?
Yeah.
Um, that would be great. I don't know if you want me to give you. Just stuffs. Well, sorry.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Tim Bergman. I serve as County Manager. Um, and I'm here today for a budget action request for a mid-year um. Cola action for our staff. All right, I can do this. That grants, um. And it'll through here. Um, so these are just uh, some of the problems, but overarching problems that we're facing as an employer. Um. You know, as we are emerge from the worst of the pandemic, there are externalities that have hit um. You know, that have hit the labor market. You know, there, we're, there've been an increase in excess retirements. Um, a large portion of women have dropped out of the labor force and have unfortunately stayed out of the labor force. Um, in July through November twenty twenty-one, that included me, twenty-one million people quit their jobs um, and moved on to other opportunities. Um. Currently, the Colorado State average, according to CDLE, um, we have a three point five percent unemployment rate. Which is low, which is a good thing for the economy, but it is a hard thing for an employer uh, to attract and retain employees. Uh, Lake County has a um, stubbornly high poverty rate. Uh, it's at ten point six percent now. And um, year-to-date, uh, Lake County Government has had. About a twelve percent turnover rate. Um, as everyone knows, there has been steady inflation in um, all industrialized economies. Um, the US is sitting at about a little over eight percent year-to-date. Um, the war in Ukraine um, has had an impact on food costs, um, which is adding to the overall inflation picture. Um, the cost of housing in Lake County um, is high. Um, and with the recent rate increases at the Fed. Um, you know, mortgage rate increases are increasing, which has cooled the housing market a little bit, which is a good thing, but it's still hampering people like taking out new mortgages. And then with any, you know, increase. And interest rates generally rents will follow that path as well. And then um, we are facing stiff um, local competition. So we're not just competing against climax anymore. Um, we have a lot of local competition within the county um, that we are. You know, that we are competing against for uh, employees. Um, and mainly to, my goal is to retain our employees. So if we look at the City of Leadville. Job postings, we are competitive with them for director and manager salaries and doing slightly better for entry level and uh, other. Other positions. Uh, local nonprofits um, have starting wages at forty-one thousand, forty-five thousand, and fifty thousand a year. Um, so we're. Kind of competitive with them. Um, looking at Chafee County for entry level and custodial positions, we are competitive there, but for manager and director level salaries, they are. Far above us. Um, and if you look in our local paper at the classified section. Every job starts between nineteen and twenty-five an hour with uh, signing bonuses between five hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, and those five thousand dollar sign-on bonuses are mainly for CDLs, which uh, the county is in. Uh, desperate need of or would sorely hurt if any of our equipment operators left um, for other opportunities. Um. And feel free, if you have questions on any of these slides or comments, feel free to interject. Um, so that is the um, the problem that we are facing mainly as an employer um, with um, attracting, but mainly retaining our employees. Um, so if you look at this graph, it is slightly dated, but the, the lines are still true. So blue is our average job openings and red is the number of unemployed. And if you pay attention to the very end there, you will see where they cross, meaning that there are. More job openings than there are unemployed people. So I'm facing a very stiff um, market. To try and attract people in this number, you can't see, this is Lake County specific. Um, you can't see the top because of the zoom. Will be there. Where? I don't know where.
Right there is good.
Um, and then, you know, last week, um, Sue Miller, who's our Colorado Workforce Center um. Director in Leadville, this is a direct quote from her. Unemployment is flat in Lake County and retention should be every employer's goal. So this is Eagle Lake and Summit Counties. Uh, similar graph, red is unemployed, blue is average job openings, and you can see the drastic change there uh, in the market. And then here, this is um, total separations in Colorado. Twenty through twenty-one, but uh, what I wanted to show this for was for you to pay attention to the red line. Um, the red line is quits. Um, and you can see that the red bar is bigger than blue, which is layoffs and other discharges. Um. And so really what it's telling us is that more people are quitting their jobs because the labor market is so good. So they have opportunities to find jobs elsewhere. Our next graph. Uh, shows where we are um, and variances from the state average, state average salary. And the column on the right, the cost of living factor. So a hundred is the average cost of living in the US. So if you're over a hundred, you have a higher cost of living. If you're below a hundred, you have a lower cost of living. So not surprisingly, all of these counties have um, higher. Uh, cost of living than um, the regular, than the rest of the US. And then if you can also, in the first column showed your average annual wage, you can see where Lake County is. We are. Somewhat competitive with our neighbors, but we are still, not jacks, we're still um. You know, behind on some of these. And not that we need to catch up completely to the Colorado State median wage, but. Um, being closer to our competitors um, will definitely help us and be able to have people want to. Stay in the county to work in the county, whether if they go over to Eagle Summit or Chafee. So these were, these are. All those graphs were just illustrating the problem better for you guys. And then here is my um. Budget action or my request for a mid-year cola. And so a cola is a cost of living adjustment, which um, acknowledges the inflationary factors in the economy. So as we've seen that if we're at an eight percent inflationary rate, this mid-year cola will. Attempt to help our staff address that, whether it's with their groceries, their rent, their mortgage, car payments, anything that are. Seeing increased um, rates. Um. So my proposal is for our ninety-eight staff who are making between forty and fifty-nine thousand dollars is to have a five percent increase. And for select staff above fifty-nine thousand dollars, which would be seventeen FTE, is to have a four percent uh, cola increase. So that would be a general fund investment of little over a hundred and eight thousand dollars and then a total funds investment of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred. Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Um. And as I start, started with, my main goal here is staff retention. Um. To retain the people we do have. And part of that is in other, building on other goals that I have and want and that the board has set a vision for um, to make Lake County. Lake County Government an employer, in employer of choice in our community, um. Which we have started to do with partnerships with CMC and with the high school, with internships um, and trying to be a direct path for people to be able to come into. A professional career at Lake County Government. Um, and then also an ancillary goal is to maintain our current service levels, but also by acknowledging um, the inflationary factors that we're going through. Um, to improve our, our service levels, showing staff that we do care about them, um, but that there is partly an expectation that uh, current service levels are maintained and then areas can improve. So my flat school, sorry. Sorry. So there are several puzzle pieces that Lake County Government has in place um, and things that we are working on implementing. So the board uh, did create a learning and development fun, fund, which has been great. Um, and has helped um, you know, is helping staff, whether it is with um. Obtaining certain licensures um, or other. Other things that benefit their career, their career path. Um, we now have job descriptions for all, all positions within Lake County Government, which is a big win because we can tie those job descriptions to. A performance review process. We currently do not have a performance review process at all. For staff and whether that is a tool for a manager to use with their employee to work on their performance or achieving goals or meeting metrics that. The board um, has outlined. We don't um, really have a tool for that um. For managers and supervisors to use. Um, the performance reviews tie into a um, merit beat, would tie into a merit-based increases. Um, so we, we currently do not have a policy for merit-based increases. They are currently one-offs right now. So I'm working on. On developing a merit-based increase policy for the board to approve. Um, so that will be something that we can always point to um. For employees when during the performance review process, if they are eligible for a merit-based increase. To be based off of the budget and then same with a uh, cola policy. The board currently does not have a. Cola policy on, on when you will decide to do one, uh, how much it will be, what the factors are that should be considered in that. So um, all of those policies. Are things that I'm working on that can be used for board adopt, for, for board adoption. Um. Which will also help so that um. You know, future boards can look to these things, but then they will have to think really hard about it, uh, if they want to make changes to those policies. Um, and another. You know, thing talking about this, we have currently right now, there's, we have a very rough draft of salary bands, but we want to work on. Creating and formalizing those with job descriptions so that an employee knows what salary range they are in, and then they can tie it to a merit-based increase and how they can. How they can grow in their career here. Um, we have a great employee handbook, which we'll fine-tune a bit today. Um, and then also. Bigger picture, um. The twenty twenty-three budget um, will be the best budget that the board has ever adopted. Because we have um, taken apart literally every piece and gone through line by line. Um, with a consultant and with the finance director on creating. Um, a much more responsive budget for the board to react to um, and respond to, but also a budget that will allow you to um. Work on, uh, work more on various projects, but also like having areas uh, for discretionary funding, like merit-based increases. Um, the board also has a vision of wanting to create a more professional organization. So this is one step. In that way, um, of showing our staff that we want to retain them and that we do appreciate the work that they do. Um, so I think this um, fits in nicely. And then also. It would seem, I would think with all of these various puzzle pieces, um. You know, it's, it's apparent that compensation's been on the back burner for many boards predating all of you. Um, so hopefully with these changes that we make, um, and these tough conversations that we're having and creating like policies for. For this board and future boards to use um, that we can um. You know, that, that future boards will be better positioned to make, to make these decisions. Cause I'm fortunate or fortunate that you guys have landed with us to create all of these policies. On what um. You want. The County Government uh, to look like in our, our compensation package to look like. Um, so we have those puzzle pieces and then a few, um, another puzzle piece is. Our um. Future projections. So the Deputy Assessor put this together for us and this is only, um, what's on the screen now is only showing um. Uh, property taxes and there are of course several variables that could change this, whether it is state legislation, board's decision on how many mills to levy. Those kind of things, but um, you can see that we have um, healthy projections going forward for the next three years. And if you look, you know, the difference between uh. You know, twenty twenty-two projections, estimated revenues in twenty twenty-three is like this. This cola increase um, can easily be absorbed in that and is less than a percent of that total increase. Um, and then looking at these factors um, as well, um, there is enough room within these new revenues to. To do a COP payment for Justice Center, if it is at two million dollars or around two million dollars. Um. And then if we also want to look at sales taxes, so for the past three years in sales taxes, we've brought in um. Little over seven point two million dollars. Um, so which has averaged over the past three years from like two million to two and a half million dollars. Year-to-date in sales taxes, we brought in over a little over one point three million dollars. Um, and I project that to be, to at least our estimate was it for it to come in at two point five million. I projected it'll come in a little bit higher. Um, I know that summer season has gotten up to a little bit of a slow foot, but now things are in full swing. I don't know that, I don't, I don't anticipate us seeing a decrease in sales revenue. Um, I think we will still see a steady. Um. Steady uh, day trip visitors to Lake County. Um, it's gonna as an offset to the pandemic. Um. Okay, so this is just a graph showing another visualization of that. So this has climax and then other valuations. So the orange line is our mind by proceeds valuation. Then the gray line, what I want to pay attention to is the assessed minus, minus mining. So you can see that um, going out, um, we have steady increases. Um. In our revenues and I think again that this cola increase can be fully absorbed. Um, and not have an impact on any other projects that the board would have um, in twenty-three or even in twenty-two. Um. To make here. Oh, even, sorry, uh, even if uh, on this, if you look at this, um, if we look at, this is all the way back, um, I used, um. And working on this presentation and on these projections, um, which you have in your board packet, um. Between uh, two thousand nine and two thousand ten is when the recession hit uh, Lake County. It's a tourist-based economy. Um, so that was a seven percent decline. So even if we look at a seven percent decline in these valuations, it is still something that can be fully absorbed. And then this is just another visualization of that, of estimated revenue um, to twenty twenty-five. Um, so again, you know, um, recapping a couple of these, so with an enhanced budget process. The board will be able to project better and plan projects better, um, and anticipate needs. Uh, with the development of a cola policy and a merit-based increase policy, we, which will be tied to budget. Um, you, um, you and future boards will have the ability to make decisions off of real numbers, projected numbers, um, and to feel comfortable in your decisions. Um, then at the very end of it, uh. Is that we just, we have to retain our staff. Um, it's been extremely hard to find any director level positions. Uh, so HR. Um, HR OEM. Rec. Um. There's the only three I can think of now. Uh, it's been very hard to find um, talent to fill those positions, which you know, comes at a cost of my time. And increased cost of, of staff, uh, spending more time, uh, picking up the slack, not having those people here. Um, and then also, you know, the. The general cost of turnover is like one and a half to two times someone's salary. So not only is it the. You know, the, the recruitment process costs a, a manager supervisor spending time doing that. Um, it's the paperwork costs, it's Ally's time on, onboarding. Um, doing background checks, all of those kind of things, but then also just. Bringing someone on board and training them for how, how we operate, um, what we do, all of those kind of things. So it's a, it's. Uh, it's expensive to lose people is my point. So um. Anyway, my. The goal here is uh, staff retention. So I can go back. I guess the proposal before you today is um. Mid-year cola increases of five percent and four percent with a total fund impacted two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Commissioner Fiedler, you have questions?
Uh, maybe just a couple of clarifying, that, that difference between general fund and total funds is because some of the departments bring in revenue that would cover. Correctness. Yeah, so uh, human services, public health, airport, or just some examples of, of other. Of funds that do not impact the general fund. Yeah.
Do you have anything?
No, not. Questions. No, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, much. No, I don't. I don't have any questions. I think. I will. It's. Really important to retain folks and recruit folks and it's been really frustrating to. Well. Yeah, to feel like you take a couple of steps back every time we, you know. Have some lose someone or. You know, gets a big. Gap filled and then in particular, your time, Tim, is taken on something else coming up. So. Along with this, I also, you know, we've talked about. Other approaches and opportunities for revenue generation as well as. You know, increasing positions which we all which we have done over the last couple of years. So. I think while all of those things. Can't be tackled all at once. We've been chipping away at all of that. And I have confidence that we'll continue to do that. And through some of these like. Things getting put into policy, that makes me feel a lot better. Than I would have necessarily felt. A few years ago, getting this position like just. Ad hocly suggesting adding a quarter million dollars to our payroll. Because you've done a great job at helping us hold people accountable and create better systems. And moving people, I think, to be here and and. You know, invest in their role in the county government for services for the community. So. I do. Yeah, I do appreciate you. Working with the workforce center too, because I think as we have to fold in all of, you know, the things to consider. It'd be really nice to get. A really great idea of, you know, just how to compete. I think I read that graph wrong and I was thinking that you had that. In order of. Where we were falling, but then as you switched, I realized. That one. Yeah, that one. I thought we were like fifth, but then I was following trying to read the numbers. I can't see that part. And I mean, I just, you know, it's really hard to. As we develop all these other. Ways to talk about our compensation and the value in employees and services. I think we'll do continue to do a better job about talking about the whole compensation package because there's more than just our salaries that. We really do invest into our folks. And I think that that is something we just need to continue to do a better job communicating to the public and. You know, as we kind of recruit folks and talent. Because it's, you know, I'm not. I'm not sure we'd ever really. Get on the same playing field as Eagle or Summit, just because of the nature of our. Revenue like it is just kind of an impossible task. And so. Yeah, with all of these other projects and things that we're looking at in. Cutting costs or finding the efficiencies and generating more revenue. Eager to keep the big picture in play over the next couple of years and really see how we can. Make this work.
If I may, we're we were not the only county facing this Fremont County, the county commissioners there based on tenure gave. Across the board increases of ten and fifteen percent. As you know, the local school district just gave a nineteen nineteen percent increase. You know, Grant County in the past three years has given to twenty percent across the board increases. Plus other things to try and attract and retain people. So we're. But it's good, but we're not alone in this in this struggle. And and I agree with you, Chris, much on the. Showing off more of our full compensation package. So C R A will be coming later this month. And to meet with employees, I'm going to make that meeting mandatory. So everybody has to go and learn about the retirement benefits. And. And yeah, and there are other there are other things that we can work on with our our health, our health benefit package and things like that. But I think for a lot of people, at the end of the day, it's right. It's what's in their paycheck.
Yeah. I think it's super interesting to see that graph of unemployment and then. You know, jobs available. Yeah, like this right here, especially in the three county region. You know, because I think like some of the feedback that we've. Received even in the last couple of years is like. Yeah, I really don't want to drive, but if I'm going to make twenty thousand dollars more. I I probably will do that. And so. This just shows that that is a real very real possibility. Even with not being able to keep up, but I think that that's very interesting.
And that was personally a test what a challenger is because my admin book for left the end of January to be three and a half months. At ten dollars of love per hour.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah.
I think really my. Biggest fear in terms of retention is that while we're paying a lot or. Work. That you're doing for other director level positions. So we're paying for that work to be done at your salary level rather than. Those director level positions. So it's costing us more to get that work done. Which is not as efficient as it could be, but also that. It's going to cause burnout for you. And I. I personally am extremely impressed at this level of detail and presentation. And I feel like we've really upped our game just because of your presence and ability to do this and and bring presentations like this to us. And I don't want to take a step backwards. I think I did say that. I was like, this is really great. What if you're not here? Yeah. So like. I think this is exactly what we've been trying to set up in terms of bringing in this and this organizational design change and structure. And so I really just don't want to lose. This because it's just furthering or like getting us closer to that vision of having that professional organization. So. I don't really have. Any other questions? I think the only clarifying question that I would have is that statistic of the twelve percent. Turnover rate. Do you by chance have a number of what that is in terms of positions? Is that like twelve positions that have turned over or become vacant since the beginning of the year?
Probably about what like eighteen.
It's more it'd be more than position that I think we're thinking employees like in June.
Okay.
Okay, you've averaged. Four or six.
Between four and six each month.
Okay, okay. That's I think that's all right. Okay. I really think that that's just kind of for me just seeing that number in terms of.
We can get some that's for you to. If you would like to see that, I think it's hard.
Oh, no, I think that's fine. I just wanted a ballpark number, but that's great. Ally, I appreciate it a lot.
Okay, well, on that same. Sorry, Jeff.
No, go ahead.
Um, I I, you know, along with I continue to improve the systems and the. Methods at which we like address all these considerations. I do still think we really need to look at. You know, I kind it kind of made me nervous about like a sweeping increase across the entire county rather than like looking at. Certain areas or departments or offices and I I think. You know, the way we combat some of those questions that are inevitable from staff is just saying, well, we. You know, we really need to, we do need to look at not filling some vacancies and in, you know, we are trying to invest in. More positions in departments and offices that truly do need them and have been without for a long. Too long, especially where development or like really impactful things on the community and the county like environment. In all aspects are are.
Yeah, like really tuning in and focusing that capacity building. So to make sure that, you know, if positions come available, we really focus on. Working with the elected official or department director of like. You know, what is this essential for? Your department or your office, or could this money in the general fund theoretically? Be better utilized in X department where we're trying to build capacity. So I'm really being focused on that and intentional in building that capacity, I think.
Yeah, for sure. To the target of several department directors have already started doing that.
Okay. Wow, that's great.
But but no, it is. And it is something that should be done just because the staff. Staff relieves that that's an opportunity for change. Not an opportunity for the status quo.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I I was just gonna call it. I mean, yeah, again. Really, I I echo. I really like the detail and thoughtfulness. I really like the slide seven and eight, you know, the eight that it's not just about money that we're paying people, you know. There's a whole bunch of other factors that go in that we're working on. That make this a sort of. A good place to work, you know, and I see many job descriptions and performance reviews. That's not, you know, that. That's not micromanaging people. I mean, it's it's good to know what you're supposed to be doing and being sort of reviewed against that and not. Whatever was on your boss's mind, you know. Someday of the year. So I really like that. I really like the revenue projections because yeah, that's the scary part. It's like locking in. You know, as a very significant amount, but I like that. One comment on the projections and not. To to influence this decision, but I think as maybe as you go into budget year, if it's possible, I'd be really curious trying to. And sorry, this is like a little off topic from from the the call increase, but like. Seeing that like big increase in revenue, I I just be curious if there's some like rule of thumb for budgeting about how much of that is going to get eaten up. By additional service requirements from our growth, you know, so how much of that is actually more money? You know, that we have to play with for. Things like job increases and other, you know, sort of newer priorities, because some of that is going to have, I I would just assume like some chunk of that has to get eaten up. So I, you know, for building permits or sheriff's deputies calls, you know, fire.
Cost of facility management.
Yeah, yeah. So all of those things. Yes, will be included in the new budget. And just so you guys have a projection of like, so when I say that. You're looking at new funding minus the C O P of like five million dollars between twenty three and twenty two. Right? There will be other factors into that before you guys get to play with excellent. Oh, we have ten million.
So you you, you know, things that we need to need to get done. Like I would assume the next step. Also is putting together like a facilities master plan with parks and recreation and open space planning.
And then so, yeah, so other puzzle pieces, so the cost recovery strategies and then with the with the pros master plan coming out. They'll have from public works will have a a rough draft, actually probably a pretty good draft of like just like. Facility costs and deferred maintenance, what that looks like. Now we can back into budgeting that way. With the fire department, at least we can actually have a a really good. Fire apparatus acquisition plan. So the county is prepared for that. You know, during midyear. Four hundred thousand dollar purchases. So all of those are are puzzle pieces as well. That will be reflected in the new budget. But also are yes, some top of front of mine, top of mine, somewhere in there for me.
So for example, in relation to your question about service level maintenance. If if we wanted theoretically for. Like the library to be open seven days or for public works to provide service seven days a week in the winter time like. Shifts from Sunday to Wednesday or Tuesday to Saturday. This is all theoretical. So no. Don't, you know, run back and tell them that this is the. But theoretically, that would be built into the budget document that you're working on with. Crystal and Dallas to bring to us.
Yeah. And so and then when the budget is presented to you guys in October, then is the opportunity for you guys, we can have ask those questions and we can. Plug in those numbers so you can see what it would look like to. Enhance enhance somewhere else, take away somewhere else, those kind of things. And we can also, we can add in a seven percent decline. Uh, to each budget and what that impact to service would be.
Okay.
Because it would. It should be that programs and services decline, not that we let go of ways. We want to keep them.
Are we? Have we? I think at some point in a conversation. Maybe it was thrown out that. Could we talk to the assessors office and do evaluation every year? So we actually like, is that is that a strategy to get some?
You can do that, or you can do it every time a home is sold. So that. That new whatever valuation or whatever market rate valuation is when the whole home is sold, then that can be. Additional revenue. So there are, yes.
So different methods for the assessors approach to. Evaluation and and which would affect revenue. And we could kind of work together to see.
I think it would just take a lot more staff.
Yeah.
If we did that.
Right. It's hard to be dating stuff.
Yeah. So like when you have a home that sells, right? They get notified of the home of the sale. And so then that will trigger them to reset the value of the appraised value or the assessed value at that. Location. And so then immediately when that sale comes through, they do visit the property to make sure that it is in. In order with what they have on their property record card. And measure the property and all the all the things. So if that. Happens more frequently, we'd have to increase staff there. Would you take a little bit of time for them to get? Those classes and training, but. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah. So, but yes, there are, but yes, yeah, definitely. And I think I don't know this week of the assessors, the the deputy assessors doing the midyear. Budget review with you guys, but. It's a perfect time to ask that question.
Yeah, I think they're up tomorrow.
A question related somewhat to that was. When building permits for improvements, additions and stuff for my residential housing, is that information shared with the assessors office?
Yeah, they have. Yeah, they have a list of permits that gets updated by the building department in real time.
They do get, okay, so say that if not, that would be another way to actually stay on top of changes to property, not just through the sale process.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm I'm super impressed and very thankful for your. Information professionalism. So.
Thank you.
With this. All right, I will entertain a motion to propose or to. Except or deny the proposal in front of us for midyear cost of living.
Move that we approve. The. Year cost of living, just.
Second. All right, any further discussion? And for me either. All right, all those in favor?
I.
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 All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, number three on our agenda, an adoption of changes to the Lake County government employee handbook. Sorry. All right. All right, Ally, you're welcome to come up to the table. This is Ally Garvey with our human resources department, and she will be leading us through the proposed changes with our employee handbook. So. I'm going to turn it over to you, Ally. And then I think, how many changes do you have in that? It's the ones we discussed in the session. Okay.
I want to say that it was like five.
Okay, and I think that we can, if you want to go through the five of those with us, then we can. Either make a motion to approve all five of them or go one by one. Well. We'll do that after we make your presentation.
Okay, sounds great. Awesome. So I'll go through it kind of the same way that I did before. So. This is the list of all the changes that we had discussed, and then I can show you the exact language in the handbook. So that first one is interim upgrade. We had discussed maintaining the flexibility of the language of an interim upgrade while still stressing that the interim rate of pay is temporary. I have added this increase rate of pay may be consistent with the pay scale of the interim position, which the employee is filling to see the flexibility of the rate by including May. But defines what to go off of for an interim rate so that supervisors aren't floundering if trying to figure out what they should. Give an employee. We'd also discuss amending the payroll change form to include this. So. I would put in the payroll change form, any change in the employee rate must be approved by county manager. And applicable department director and submitted to human resources. That's already kind of implied in this form anyway. So we can look at that, but. So that would be. So that would be right there. Okay, are there any questions about that one? Does that seem?
It's good. I think it's good to have it as, I mean. Clear is better than.
And there's it's still flexible. And there's, it's still flexible, so that means we can't, an employee wouldn't be able to come back and say, well, it's in here because there's still that name.
Okay.
Um, so the call and the callback pay, um, this is something that we had discussed amended to include a second for employees who are called back. Um, add this section under callback where a callback is defined as an unstable request from authorized supervisor and authorized supervisor. And that one, um. Is kind of. So employees who are not on call and are called back, we're safe payment thirty dollars for a regular workday, sixty dollars for weekend day or one hundred dollars for holidays for each period during which they are called out in addition to. Pay at the regular rate or overtime applicable rate for hours actually spent and responding to calls. Um, and then this is the section where it's fine to find the callback as being defined by, um, an unsaid request paid by an authorized manager. So it's not just getting called back by one of, um, their coworkers. Um, any questions about that one? All right. We have a holiday pay hours, so remove maximum of eight hours language to accommodate for our employees who work twelve, ten or other months of hours on our scheduled shifts. But that's just kind of striking that out.
Okay.
And so that would be. To accommodate for up here saying, um. When paid holiday leave is taken for full workday, employee would pay for a number of hours, the employee would have otherwise been scheduled to work, so. That is that part right there. Are there any questions about that one? All right. Um, and then the last one, we had added a maximum accrual, so, uh, page twenty eight. So this was just the maximum accrual per paid period, so that employees that they work overtime cannot accrue more than the four point six two. So this is already in the vacation, it just wasn't in there for a sec. So, um, and then the maximum per person plays would be two points at seven hours, um, that would be the forty hours a week, but most part of employees don't work forty hours a week anyway, so.
Easy, um, Chris, thanks. Uh, Chris, you vetted all these with Ally, I'm assuming, and.
They were, oh, I guess I didn't send them out to you, but.
Yeah, I didn't get them, but I don't have any issues with the way it's been rephrased. I think that it's, it makes clear.
Okay.
It still provides accounting's flexibility.
Perfect, okay. So the next step then will be to, if we choose to, um, adopt these, to re-record this and then send distribute it to all employees, let them know that there have been updates to the, to the handbook, correct? Okay.
And my suggestion would be when you do that, to provide your summary in there so that. Two reasons for that, one is that we all know that there will be folks who won't take the time to to read the handbook in those areas. And so this provides them the summary, so they can't say, I didn't know you changed that. And also just for, for consistency in terms of having them have access to a quick reference of what.
Okay.
In our work session, did we talk about changing the P T O as well, or is that a future conversation in paying out P T O? And potentially not paying out.
Yeah, that's a future.
Okay.
Bigger, bigger puzzle piece.
Yeah, yeah, because the law says we have to pay out. The only thing you don't have to pay out is sick leave. Anything vacation, P T O, doesn't matter what you call it, it other types.
Oh, I thought you had said like P T O, you don't necessarily have to. Pay out.
No, just sick leave.
And now, is that, I think what you're talking about, Chris, so much is the, um. The liability that the county holds right now, in terms of everything.
Sure, and then now they accrue it orderly or so that we actually are, okay. Really not on the hook so that as soon as somebody starts with employment here, okay.
But if we, and if we do make those changes, perfect, but rock, so if we move to everybody who's worked here for a year or more gets. Two weeks paid and then you can accrue a little bit more, we would have to pay.
That two weeks, even if they work.
Yeah. Where did what the current P T O that they have.
Yeah, if you reduce their vacation bank, you'd still have to pay it out.
Right.
What's, so if you said somebody you can accrue. Only up to a hundred hours and somebody has four hundred hours, you'd have to pay the three hundred hour.
Sure, sure, but the P T O doesn't, doesn't. Turnover from year to year, but the vacation hours do, right? And so our conversation was like, how do we?
Well, currently our vacation hours just accrue every paid period, they don't. Like bank and then you lose some kind of thing. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, but the P T O hours you do. The, like, that's just an annual.
Personal time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's twenty four hours that an employee would get prorated for when they start, and then next year, they don't get to add that and make it forty eight or something, it would just be twenty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the one thing I I'll caution about that I've run into with with other government situations is you end up in situations where you get to December and all of a sudden nobody wants to work, because they've got all the sun and. So you you probably want to encourage department directors to track that stuff as well, to encourage folks to take it throughout the year.
Or go to anniversary, maybe?
Can we, I also say you could do it, so it's not all. Cause that you could end up in an uncomfortable situation and then people complaining, because, well, I asked for the time off, you know, for the holidays and I couldn't take this into any other requests, and so I lost my time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's some things we can definitely do about that then, but I think to. Sarah's point, Tim and Ally. When we're discussing with employees like total compensation package, I think it would be really beneficial to make sure that this is included in the total compensation package that we talked to them about.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah.
Um, like, because this carries a liability cost with it on the balance sheet, so I think it would be really important to. Say to them, like, this is a part of your compensation package, and maybe explain that to people that might not.
Yeah.
They may not understand that that is part of their total compensation.
And Ally has started running that on the front end with.
Okay.
Some people do see that and they can, they realize that. But. Everybody else.
Yeah, and all of our ads in the news paper do advertise P T O as part of our benefits package.
Oh, great, awesome, okay. I don't have any other questions. Or comments or concerns. That was very straightforward.
No, no, I would say this is great, I mean, this wasn't, I mean, when we started working on the handbook. Like, it was like thirteen years out of date or something, so it's just great to be keeping up.
Yeah.
Like, changes like this, it doesn't become thirteen years out of date again.
Well, and I think. Changing the policy when we recognize that there's an issue with the policy.
Yeah.
It's great.
I mean, so thank you for that. Um, I don't have any questions and we. Um. I'll just accept a motion however anybody wants.
Um, I, I mean, I'll move to approve the Lake County Government Employee Handbook revisions as presented by H R. Info.
Okay.
One second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you, Ally.
Thanks, Ally. Seeing then, all those in favor?
I.
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 All right, thank you very much, Ally, we appreciate it. Get back to my agenda. Okay, um, next is a contract with A Security and Safety Services LLC for security services up at Lake County Courthouse. Um, and so this is a ratification of this contract, um. I've worked on this with, uh, Sheriff Ed Speckman. Um, as you know, we had a high profile murder case recently. Um, prosecuted in the courthouse, um, and it was requested of the courts and of the sheriff that we moved forward with, um, providing some. Uh, additional court security, um, so A Security has currently been contracting with us. There's money in the court security grant to cover it. They provide coverage forty hours a week, um, it's three thousand eight hundred dollars per week, um, and then we. For this contract, um. And this will go until we terminate the contract. It's been reviewed by legal, um, the sheriff sent it to Chris and she vetted the contract and. Helped to put it in the, uh, professional services. Dot, uh, template document that we have, um, and so it's ratifying this contract, um, that the sheriff, uh. Has entered with A Security, um. The next step in this process is that I had applied for a court security grant, um, with Sheriff Speckman, we asked for two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to. Have this additional security to provide security at the front doors. Um, we were denied that request and awarded a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, so him and I will work through the budget for this next cycle with court security and, um, this contracting service.
Great. And will they, is the contract through just the trial currently, or will they?
Through, through the summer, um, right now, and then we will be awarded the grant. Through the state fiscal year starts July one to June thirty, so we just found out about the award on. Fridays, so we'll figure out what that looks like going into the next court security cycle, yeah.
Okay. And we had chatted with some of our contractors and professional, um. Assistants through the sheriff's office, we had that gap and, um, a lot of them were actually recommending that or. Letting us know that a lot of jurisdictions actually contract this service out, which.
Like.
Sounded really great, because we've had a real hard time hiring for it, so. Um, those, I mean, the gentlemen who happened to be here through A's were really friendly and, um. I was really happy to have them.
Yeah, same. Um, I'd, and and we'll work through what that looks like with the cost, um, for the court security grant that we just received. We asked for two full time and one part time person, um, in the court security grants. In addition to our current court security employee, um, that sits upstairs, so that grant ask was really big and, um. We have permission from the courts because they do sign off on that grant document. Permission or not permission, support from the courts for that ask with court security grant, so. Now that the grant dollars are are significantly smaller than what we had originally asked for, we can still work that in, it's just going to be. Um, some periods of coverage that might be slimmer or more beat up depending on the types of trials that we might have. And out of the court, so the sheriff and I will, um, go through the grant document this week, um, and then make a determination of how to move forward with an addendum to this contract. For those services.
Great.
Yeah, question, you all can get that too, so, because I noticed there's always two out there, and I guess the question is, is that. Only when there are trials going on upstairs, or is it just? There, because I know the volume of traffic coming in and out. It's probably not as high to just by two. Yes, at the time, unless there is a trial or there are court activities.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's, um, part of the conversation that Ethan and I will have about. Working that into that court security grant, um, and then seeing if the county needs to cover any overage on the court security grant or not. Um, but, but we'll figure that out this week, what that looks like, but that might be part of that proposal, Chris, with. Um, you know, slimming down services when it's not necessary to have increased services for jury trials or something like that.
Do they have, they still using the stand, the thing upstairs?
I don't, I don't believe so, but there was a court security deputy upstairs during the trial, um, to provide for additional security with court staff.
And since, yeah, you know, I'm just down here, but I was gonna say, they aren't using the standards upstairs anymore. That might help in terms of not, unless there is something going on in the courtroom, you don't necessarily need a bailiff.
Yeah, yeah, um, and so. We, we do plan, as far as I know from the sheriff, we do plan to keep the current employee that we have with court security. Um, and keep her upstairs, because she does provide additional support in those, um, instances of court security. So there's not any, any talk of cutting employees at this point, um, we just want to supplement down here, yep, yep, absolutely, so. Um, anyway, that's just what this is that I've been working on with sheriffs. So, um, any questions about the contract with A Security at this point?
No, that sounds good.
Um, I'll move to approve the ratification of the contract with A Security and Safety Services LLC for security services. At the Lake County Courthouse.
A second.
Any further discussion? Yeah.
Just, just that discussion, um. Reminded me, I I don't know if this is just like an idle thought or a kind of, but like the idea of cross-training between like court security, you know, detention, you know, even the C S Os when that becomes a thing. You know. I don't, yeah, I have no idea how possible that is, or if employees do or don't want that, um, and it's sort of, I mean, but just something. To.
I'll remember, yeah, I'll definitely remember to share that information with him, I think. Um, him and I will go through the court security grants, because contracting is something that we haven't done before for security. And so we'll just want to make sure that if we are cross-training employees, that we are sure to appropriately. Um, expense their payroll expenditures from wherever they're working.
Yeah.
So just, just want to make sure that we incorporate that on the backend and make sure that the court security grant supports them.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Thank you, great point, though. All right, seeing then, all those in favor?
I.
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 All right, up next is a contract with S B I Constructors Incorporated and Robert Juris and Associates. Architects L T D, um, R J A for design and construction of the planned Lake County Community Justice Center. Um, so Chris, we have you on the agenda to present these, and Jeff, if you have additional, um, comments since you've worked with. Um, with the selection committees, um, you're welcome to chime in, but Chris, if you want to join us, or if you prefer to sit over at your little desk.
I'm good right here, um, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So essentially, Colleen and I have been working. For what seems forever, um, to get the final terms negotiated with, um, R J A and, uh, S C I on these contracts, and so. We were finally able to get everybody together last week for back to back Zoom meetings with each of the the vendors and, um. R J A, the challenge with them has been it's somewhat of a moving target. And in in terms of what was proposed, you know, the contract was sent out to them as part of the, the process and stuff for review. And they were asked to provide comments, which they did. Some of the frustration is the things after they were chosen, that they asked to change work in the original contract stuff, in in fact, like. Coming into one of the issues was the insurance levels and the, the, you know, the R P required. R F Q, you know, noted that it was going to be for the design, uh, two million, four million insurance coverage, and they said. That they would be able to provide that, you know, cost in their, their bid. But then backtracked on that, when I guess, you know, what the cost is going to be, because they, they sort of, they have. Only covered up to two million dollars, um, insurance and. They, um, haven't had any plans and that type of thing, so, uh, you know. Uh, based on, I think, Commissioner Feigler's feedback and his communications, you know, um, you know, the proper laws to accept that. Now, some of the other changes they're asking for that Colleen is still working through the the language one. Has to do with the fact that in the proposed contract, there are some. Blanks, if you will, that need to be filled in, and they're wanting to negotiate the information, additional information that goes into those. Um, the one thing I just want to be aware of is depending on how that comes out. Um, they, they want to, now they have more specifics, but they want more information that Colleen and I feel may end up. Impacting the actual cost, if you will. Um, for example, they want to know what the contingency is, and typically you don't provide your trainers with that information, because then they say, I've got that cushion. You know, and I, I can build to that cushion, so that information is typically not provided, so. I'm sorry to say that, that, um, for R J A, I don't have the final version of contact from Colleen based on our discussions we've been last week, I expect that anytime, so. But we can handle these in two separate things, I'd like to to make a a request that. Your G A A contract, we approve, pending final legal review, depending on what comes, how how much they dig in their heels about that additional information stuff.
Okay.
Any questions otherwise or not?
I don't have any questions. Do you have anything to add, Jeff, or?
No, I think that that covered it, I mean, yeah, it's, um, yeah, I. No, I think that was good.
Sarah, no, you have any questions?
Thank you.
Um, with S C I, are there any?
Well, I was gonna ask to hand, because the, the S C I is, was a lot simpler, there were only two issues that came down for them, one. Um, had to do with the, i- if the county defaults in its payments, what the interest rate would be, and which I. Thought was kind of amusing for them to dig their heels in, but fortunately we got their CFO on the meeting last week and he's like, I'm fine, so they've accepted our two percent. Um, which is based on. If if there's a fault, somebody goes supporting, you get a judgment, then the the essentially prescribed, um, interest rate through the Secretary of State's. Uh, process for money judgments is two percent, and so that's what I use for that, and so they accepted that, um. The other one had to do with, um. Subrogation as it applies to their subcontractors, and so, um, e- essentially what. They, they wanted to take out that the waiver of subrogation would apply to their subcontractors, and. I'm okay with that as long as, and they seem to understand, they're still in the hope for their subcontractors, so the only exposure there. So the only exposure there for the county is if a subcontractor fails to perform and defaults. And FCI wouldn't have the funds to cover it, either insurance or otherwise, given the size of FCI and their projects and stuff like that. I don't think that's a high enough risk that the county needs to be concerned about accepting that. The waiver would only apply to, um, FCI.
Okay. Okay, any further, okay, great.
Other than that, I think, I, and that I think we're on target with, so.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't, I didn't see her send the final contract, or did she?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know she said she was still working on, uh. The, um, RJA one, so I wanna know what she said, she sent an email saying that it's over to FCI for signature. So we haven't gotten that signed from FCI, that they've indicated they've accepted, it's just going to be a process.
So can we, um, approve both of those pending final legal review, because they'll come for me? Or FCI just as is, cause they have the contract.
They have, they've agreed to the, the provisions that we talked about, like, so all we're waiting for now is they're signed once, as soon as we get. The signed version from them, it can be presented, I would, I would ask to accept that one, going to improve that one.
Okay.
The RJA one, I would want. The pending final.
Okay. Okay. Alright, so I will accept a motion for FCI.
Uh, I move that we accept the contract, uh, with FCI Constructors, Inc.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
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 Alright, um, and I will accept a motion for our contract with RJ.
Uh, I move that we accept the contract with Robert Juris and Associates Architect, uh, as the. Lead, uh, design, uh, for the justice center pending, uh, final legal review.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Alright, none for you? Alright, seeing then, all those in favor?
I.
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 Alright, thank you, Chris, and Jeff, for working on, working through that.
Yeah, as soon as we have those back from, from the signing from FCI and then from Cal.
Okay, cool. Alright, um, and I see that we still have a member of the public on with us. Um, I don't know if you have any, um, public comment, I, I don't have any. Alright, so seeing no, um, further items on our agenda this afternoon, any final comments from my board members, fellow board members? No? Alright, thank you all very much for joining us today, we appreciate it, and we will adjourn at twelve thirteen PM. Thank you.